Introducing another friend, old friend Mark Quant is with us who is the Director of the Regional Food Bank of Northeast New York, one of the largest food banks around. And Mark is also very intimately involved with food nutrition policy as well as running the food bank. And I have to say, we've known each other a long time, but I'm delighted you could join us. And we look forward from hearing your perspective, particularly, you know, certainly about public programs, but also about how the food bank and your pantries are interacting and stressed, and what other kind of innovative things might help.
Great.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Russ, and thank you, Commission. And nice to follow Linda. I serve on the Board of Hunger Solutions, so it's a tough act to follow. Thanks. Well, good morning. Again, my name is Mark Quant. I'm the Executive Director of the Regional Food Bank of Northeastern New York. It is an honor to be here, and I thank the Commission for giving me the opportunity to speak. I hope I can add something of value to your deliberations as you discuss opportunities to more effectively address the problem of hunger in our country. The materials I received to help me prepare my testimony encourage me to talk about my own experiences with hunger and our overall communities' experiences with food insecurity. Personally, I'm one of the lucky ones. I've never experienced hunger myself. I've never gone to bed hungry, and never had to worry about my children being hungry or even being properly nourished. In fact, although I have worked in human services my entire career, hunger was not an issue that strongly captured my attention until I was hired for a job with a regional food bank back in 1983. I've thought and learned a lot about hunger since that time. I did have quite a bit of experience working with poor children before I took the job with a regional food bank. While I was in college, a fellow student, who is now my wife, and I literally adopted six poverty-stricken kids as our little brothers and sisters. We spent a lot of time in their homes, experienced their deep poverty firsthand, knew they were not getting enough food to eat, and realized that the many disadvantages they faced affect their growth and development and would severely limit their opportunities in life. Once a week, we brought our little friends up to campus to eat dinner in the dining hall, and they were very gracious to always feed the kids. We didn't think much of it at the time, but as I thought more about it over the years, I realized the reason they probably ate so heartily was because it was the best meal they got all week. After college, I worked as a childcare worker in a home for emotionally disturbed children, where I continued to witness the devastation poverty and malnutrition have on children of all ages. During many of my years at the food bank, my wife has been the social worker at her local small-town elementary school in Scahary. Her work involves her with most of the poor families in the district. She provides many special services for them, and it has always been her requirement that the entire Quant family be part of her work, which has connected me directly with many of these families. I see how they live. I know how hard they try, yet despite their efforts, I see how difficult it often is for the parents to provide the basic necessities of life for their children. One day, my wife told me about that an 11-year-old boy in one of these families, and I knew him quite well because he was also on my Little League team, but both he and his younger sister were both diagnosed with diabetes, which his doctor concluded resulted from a lack of proper nutrition. They will suffer their whole lives because of childhood malnutrition, and we will also pay for it as a society in lost opportunities and higher medical costs. I've heard hundreds of stories in my years with a food bank, but one that always stood out for me was a day that I visited a company to pick up a financial donation they were given to the food bank. While I was waiting, one of their employees came over to me very quietly, said, "I appreciate the work you do." No one else was around. A couple of years ago, I was going through a tough time and often didn't have enough food for myself and my family. I never would have made it without the help that we received from a local food pantry. They helped me get back on my feet. I'm doing well now, and I want to thank you. I mean, I had very little to do with that, but to me, that story was relevant because I would have never known that that particular person had ever struggled with hunger. Last week, one of our truck drivers told me people were lining up at 4:30 in the morning for the mobile food pantry delivery he made to Glover'sville that day. Another staff told me how grateful the 400 people were who got food from a food bank farm stand in Newburgh. When I hear stories like that, one conclusion is obvious. No one would show up at 4:30 in the morning or stand in line for more than an hour to get a package of food unless it was desperately needed. I could go on with many similar stories, but my point is simple. Although some would deny hunger exists or dismiss it as not a serious problem, it is real and has serious, long-lasting detrimental effects on people's lives. It affects children, adults, and seniors. It impacts people we might guess are in need, and increasingly, others we would never imagine are hungry. As I began preparing my testimony, I wondered what I could possibly say that you have not already heard or might hear today from the other presenters. I'm sure I've not broken new ground for you, but I wanted to start with a reminder that hunger is personal, and you have a great opportunity to make a real positive impact on the lives of millions of hungry people throughout our great country. My personal experience with providing food assistance to people in need is more closely aligned with direct emergency feeding programs than it is with government anti-hunger programs. We're connected to that, but every day, we work on the emergency feeding system. I've been with the Regional Food Bank for 32 years, 31 as Executive Director. The Regional Food Bank, as do all food banks in the National Feeding America Network, collects large donations of food from the food industry and provides it to food pantries, soup kitchens, emergency shelters, and other programs feeding hungry people. Our donated food is supplemented with food provided by the federal government through TFAP, the Emergency Food Assistance Program, and purchased food that agencies can partly afford because of the New York State Hunger Prevention and Nutrition Assistance Program, which we affectionately call HIPNAP. We provided £32 million, our food bank, to 1,000 agencies in 23 counties in the eastern part of the state last year, and these programs in turn help feed 325,000, they do help feed 325,000 people a year. Nationally, the Feeding America Network serves more than 46 million people through 58,000 programs and provided nearly $4 billion pounds of food to these programs last year. Our food bank's distribution has increased 60% since 2008, and that's pretty common nationwide among food banks, largely because of the increased need after the recession, but also due to the generosity of the food industry and changes we have made at our food bank, and other food banks have done the same, to accommodate more fresh produce and other perishable food. Our relationships with our member agencies inform us about the level of need they are experiencing in their communities, their challenges, and the challenges faced by the people they serve. We and food banks throughout the country have created many new programs in the last 10 years, such as mobile pantries and backpack programs, to get more nutritious food into the hands of people who are hungry, especially children, or at risk of hunger. Food banks are also involved with government programs like SNAP outreach, summer feeding, after-school feeding programs, and others. Given my experiences working on the issue of hunger, my first and perhaps strongest recommendation to you to reduce food insecurity is to encourage Congress to do no harm. Congress is currently debating ideas like block granting SNAP, and it's inconceivable to me that anyone could possibly think that such a change would really be beneficial for hungry people. I see it personally as a cost-cutting measure. SNAP is widely recognized as a proven effective program as currently structured. The federal government and our legislators, in my opinion, should be proud of it. Please encourage Congress to leave it alone or strive to make it even better. Do not begin dismantling a program the government designed to help the hungry that is actually working as it was intended. I know this piece is beyond the scope of the Commission, but I would be remiss if I did not also encourage you to do whatever you can to push Congress to increase the minimum wage. One of your stated objectives is to reduce the need for government nutrition assistance programs. There's no better way to reduce that need than by ensuring working people earn a wage that can adequately sustain them and provide the basic necessities of life. I would like to focus my remaining time on recommendations in the following areas. TFAP, the Summer Food Service Program, tax incentives for the donation of food, and efforts USDA can and should do to expand, I'm sorry, can and should expand to facilitate the donation of fresh produce. TFAP is a great program. We've administered it at our food bank for over 20 years. It provides a nice variety of good-quality food, and since the food goes to our member agencies free of charge, it is extremely beneficial to them. Unfortunately, the TFAP food supply is very inconsistent, sometimes due to federal budget issues and other times for reasons never made clear to us. This inconsistency makes it hard for food banks and food pantries to plan and leads to gaps in service and more costly operations for all of our programs. Food banks typically administer TFAP in their states, we do in New York State, all the food banks in the state, but often there is such an abundance of food, many of them cannot store it all in their warehouses and either have to turn some of it down or rent off-site storage at a premium cost to accept it. Just as often, there's hardly any food available, and agencies have to cut back on the food they provide, their guests, or purchase food at retail prices to meet the need. It would be very helpful if Congress could keep funding more stable and consistent and USDA maintain a steadier flow of food. The Summer Food Service Program is another great federal hunger relief program focused specifically on children. We have administered it at our food bank with great success. We would love to expand it into other neighborhoods and communities, but the USDA mandate that all summer meals must be consumed on-site under the supervision of an adult makes it impossible to do so. Modification or elimination of that one requirement would enable program administrators to find new and creative ways to get meals to children in need, especially in rural areas where the program is vastly underrepresented. Third issue is tax incentives. Feeding America and its network of food banks have made increasing the amount of fresh produce distributed to the people we serve a key part of our strategic plans over the last decade. Our network currently provides about 1 billion pounds of produce annually, about 600 million of which, the pounds of which is donated from produce farmers, packers, and shippers. Getting fresh fruits and vegetables to the hungry people who need it is a huge focus to us, huge focus to us. We have set an aggressive goal of closing the national meal gap, which consists of distributing enough meals so every individual in the United States in need of a meal has access to one. Increasing produce donations is a key to achieving that goal. Produce is abundantly available, and in a recent research study, 55% of the people we serve said fresh fruits and vegetables were the most desired items not received. However, there are challenges to obtaining more fresh produce, some of which are logistic in nature, but in many cases, the decision to donate or not is made before discussion of logistics even starts. Thousands of farmers donate each year to help those in need, but their donations account for only a small fraction of the available produce to donate. There is a real financial impact on donors to pack and prepare excess food for donation, a cost not all donors can bear. Many farmers are not eligible for the federal food donation tax deduction that lets qualified donors make an enhanced deduction when they donate nutritious food to nonprofits. More specifically, most farmers use cash basis accounting, and the food donation tax deduction requires a donor to know their cost to produce the item. Farmers using cash basis accounting are not able to do so. That is a key reason why Feeding America is championing federal legislation that would fix this problem so all donors, regardless of accounting method or business size, can take the food donation tax deduction. Feeding America and its network food banks have been working with supporters in Congress and throughout the food industry to enact the America Gives More Act, HR 644, and its companion bill, S 930, the Good Samaritan Hunger Relief Tax Incentive Act. These bills would improve and expand federal tax incentives so all donors, large or small, can take an enhanced tax deduction when they donate excess food to a nonprofit. Congress passed a special food donation tax deduction in 1976, but the provision was available to C corporation taxpayers only. While the provision had a powerful impact on food donations, it left out significant segments of the food industry, including many farmers and growers, that are not eligible for the incentive. In 2006, as part of the Pension Protection Act, Congress enacted a two-year provision expanding the food donation tax deduction to include all business taxpayers as eligible donors, not just C corporations. This temporary provision has been consistently extended, yet the provision could provide a greater incentive to encourage food donations if it were made permanent. The temporary nature of the deduction is a disincentive to small businesses that want to establish or expand a food donation program. It should not cost a business more to donate excess food than it does to landfill it, yet that is the exact situation small businesses and farmers face each day. We have seen, the network-wide, Feeding America have seen 137% increase in the amount of food donations from non-C corporations since the temporary provision was enacted in 2006. However, the temporary nature of this provision makes it very difficult for small businesses to incorporate food donations into a long-term business plan and reduces the amount of businesses willing to donate food. We strongly believe enactment of the America Gives More Act would help encourage increased donations of excess produce as well as food inventory across the food industry spectrum. And finally, tax incentives are only one part of the solution to making more donated produce available to hungry Americans. There are many costly logistical challenges that impede the ability of food banks to acquire and distribute more produce, packing and shipping costs chief among them. It can cost our food bank $6,000 to $7,000 to ship one trailer load of produce from major growing regions like Texas and California. It is very difficult for us and most food banks to cover such high costs on a consistent basis. Feeding America food banks around the country have started to work with USDA to fund pilot programs that will increase promotion of fresh produce and help us get more donations of produce for the people we serve. We would love to expand this work with USDA and Congress to identify how we could maximize the impact of these grants. And that sums up my testimony. On behalf of the Regional Food Bank of Northeastern New York and Feeding America, all the agencies, the thousand agencies we work with, and the tens of thousands of hungry people we serve, I want to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark, very much. Just quickly, you know, one of our members who couldn't be here today is Spencer Coats, who is with a group called Hodgson Industries in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and they own some of the largest array of grocery stores serving the area of the Midwest, Arkansas, Tennessee, Kentucky. And I know that he's been greatly interested in some of these issues about donations, like they do a good bit of it. I'm wondering, who are your major donors and so forth that you rely upon consistently? And credit, kudos to them, but I mean, I just, you know.
All donors, not just produce?
Yeah, I mean, just.
The retailers in the area, Price Drop or Hannaford, Walmart, are some of the biggest donors we have. CNS Wholesale down in Hudson Valley, which is really a wholesaler, they don't have any retail, they wholesale four retail operations. Our biggest produce donor is actually Rail-X, which is based in Schenectady, and they are a company that ships produce from the West Coast by rail, and it gets dropped in Schenectady, and then they ship it out from there to retailers and wholesalers throughout the Northeast. We have a lot of farmers who are donors. Fry Hoppers was our first donor and still a very large donor of ours. So it really crosses all areas of the food industry, from the growers to manufacturers, processors, retailers, wholesalers, brokers, really all segments of the food industry. And we also get a lot of non-food items, mostly from retailers, but items like paper goods, personal hygiene items, diapers, which are great because items like that are not, you can't use food stamps to the SNAP program to get those items. So it's a real benefit for food pantries when they can access that and provide those in addition to the food for the people who come to them for help.
First of all, I want to thank you for your service. How far south do you go in Northeastern?
All the way to the New Jersey border. We cover the whole eastern part of the state except Westchester County, New York City, and Long Island.
I lived for a time when I worked here in Albany in Pine Plains, New York, so I know that the eastern side of the Hudson River is beautiful.
That's ours.
Thank you for your work.
I was very taken by your testimony, and I had a couple of questions. First of all, on this issue of the use right now, we are now five years past the end of the recession. Have you not seen any drop?
We've seen.
From the really downtime of the recession?
We've seen it stabilize.
Stabilize?
Yes. The increases were very dramatic, 2009, 2010, 2011, and since that time, when, as we speak with our member agencies and gather their statistics, those numbers have not declined, although they have finally stabilized.
Can you sense any difference in the economic strength of the users of your food banks?
You know, we're not as directly connected to the individuals. I know that the, it just seems that the recovery, which I think is always common, benefits the people at the lower end of the economic scale last. They're the last ones to recover from the struggles.
That's true, but it's five years now. I mean, it's a long time. But you're right, that's true. There's often a lag. There's also a lag going in sometimes, too. My next question is, what about, the question I asked Linda, if USDA changed its policy concerning distribution of benefits so that it came twice a month, not once a month, would that, do you have an opinion on that?
I think it sounds great to me. I think ever since I've been involved with food banks, you've always heard from food pantries, they get real busy at the end of the month.
Yeah. Let's say that one of the charges of our commission is to be spending neutral, so we have a, we're limited on the dollars we can recommend. That's the expectation of Congress. And let's, if we had a limited amount of additional spending to recommend, I ran, I had a TFAP program in New York City. I think New York City invested a significant of its own city dollars into it, which is unusual.
Yes.
If we were to recommend increased federal spending on emergency feeding programs such as yours, or we had a choice, SNAP or emergency feeding, and we did no harm to SNAP, like you recommend, let's say we didn't come up with any big changes, just some tweaks to make it better, but we had this additional money, would you, where would you come down?
I don't think I'd want to get into a debate as to where it would fall best, but I think...
What do you think would be most effective in reducing hunger or very low food security?
I don't know that I would be an expert on that, but I can say, because I do have expertise in this area, I believe, is that there, and I don't think most people realize it, there are massive amounts of fresh produce available that could be donated, massive.
Right, and I was very taken by your testimony, and I'm sure we're going to get your written copy on the tax, federal tax benefits or incentives, which would, of course, come with a cost, but a appropriate cost that would allow for greater donations of fresh produce.
But also the infrastructure needs on the other side that would enable, because even if, I'll tell you a quick story. I was talking recently with the Director of the Food Bank Association in Florida, and they do a lot. I mean, that's, New York State is a big agricultural state, but Florida dwarfs it in terms of the amount of food that's produced. And she was talking about the amount of food they receive, and they have one particular farmer who's a, must be a massive, massive donor, and they donate all kinds of produce. An example she gave me was green beans. And they have had to tell this farmer to limit, that they have to limit the amount they can take because there's just so much their food banks can accommodate, just the perishable nature and things like that. But none of those green beans, or very little of them, get shipped to any food banks out of the state.
Right.
And that's all infrastructure. That's the cost. It's transporting the product. Now, green beans are more perishable than maybe carrots or some harder potatoes, harder your vegetables, so you have to move them quickly. But if we could find ways to make something like that more affordable for food banks, we would be able to move millions and millions of pounds of wonderful fresh produce and get it in the hands of hungry people. Now, back in, I'll just mention also, back in the 80s and 90s, produce was, in a lot of ways, a dirty word for food banks. It was very hard to handle. Food pantries weren't used to it. They didn't want to handle it, and the message was always that, those people, they don't know how to use it. No one knows how to cook anymore. We made a conscious effort with a lot of help in the 90s to begin to take in more produce, and the message we received was, the way to move more produce is you have to take more. It was like, that was scary because we had a hard time moving what we were getting. But we did it, and what we, and what the people who taught us this said, once people get used to the fact you have it, they're going to start taking it. So we started taking it, now we can't get enough. We moved millions of pounds a year, and what we have found is that old theory was not true. Poor people love produce. They'll tell you all the time that the most important food they receive is the produce, fresh fruits and vegetables.
Mark, just to follow up on an earlier question, knowing that a lot of your donor base are merchants and retailers as well, the notion of, that Robert brought up of having a minimum shelving space, you know, you know what impulse buying and how it affects how people buy things. We all are affected. But having merchants have to have minimal space for fruits, vegetables, and other healthier foods, I mean, how do you think your merchant donors would react to that, and how do you personally react to that?
I personally think it's a great idea. I think giving people the choices and the options to get better food is wonderful. I don't know, space limitations in some of these stores, I'm sure they put on the shelves the items that will make them the most money, so it might be difficult in some cases, but if there was some way that that could be encouraged, I think it would be a great idea and should definitely be pursued.
And what about the whole issue that was brought up around sugar-sweetened beverages as well? I mean, do you have a sense of whether we should be financing the purchase of them through SNAP?
Through SNAP, I have no objection to SNAP dollars being used for those purposes. I think research shows that people use their SNAP dollars for the most part very wisely. I'm not one who believes that poor people should be denied some basic pleasures in life, and that might be one of them, so I would not look to inhibit their ability to get items like that.
I would like to ask a question.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a whole two minutes. I know you weren't, but that's all right. Allow me to go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I appreciate it. I'd like to hear a little bit more about your struggles with the administration of TFAP, and that was interesting for me to hear, that it's fluctuating, it's unpredictable. Can you describe what that's like a little bit more so we can understand it? And also, I know that not all states participate in TFAP. Maybe you can talk about some of the barriers for other states to participate in that program? And then after you answer that question, I have another question.
How much time do I have? Okay. So I'll start, first of all, with the variety of programs throughout the country. And when we, when people talk about block granting, things like SNAP, what comes to mind for us, because we're so closely connected to it, is TFAP. TFAP is administered differently in every state, and I have to say, we are very fortunate in New York State. I have to believe we have the model program in the country for administration of TFAP. I've talked to food banks in other states. I cannot believe the restrictions and the burdens that are placed on them to administer the program, which makes it extremely difficult. It's a disincentive for them to want to do it. They always do it, but it's a disincentive for them to do it because the restrictions are so severe, or the workload is so high, the paperwork is ridiculous. New York State has been wonderful. I think that it would be a better idea to find models that are effective and then roll that out across the country, let that be the model for how those programs are run. I think there would be few, if any, objections in other states if they had a model like New York State's. So that's that. In terms of how it's administered and the flow of food, a lot of that has to do with the way Congress tends to approve budgets and approve funding for the program. So if the budget's not approved, there's a delay in the funding that is available to purchase the food. So if there's a delay in that, then USDA can't spend the money, and then it might get, then they typically buy in quarters. So if they don't have the money in quarter one, and it's not available until quarter two, we get nothing. Well, actually, we get nothing in quarter two because they didn't buy in quarter one, and then we'll get a double load in quarter three, which is great in quarter three in a lot of ways, but it can overwhelm food banks, especially if they don't have large facilities. So a lot of it has to do with Congress. I don't know exactly in terms of the operations at USDA, how their purchasing is done and how things flow, but there have been delays in the flow of food, I think above and beyond just the budget piece. I think the budget piece is the biggest impact.
Okay.
If there was a way to overcome that, it just creates so many problems and so many inconsistencies that seem needless to me. It's a great program. It's wonderful food. The food has improved immensely from the late 80s and early 90s, and we have choices, and so agencies get a lot of great food through that program. It's the first item that they order from the food bank because it goes out to them free of charge. The administrative reimbursement could always be higher, but at least it's there for food banks when we take it, we incur work, but at least we get a reimbursement for it. It's a great program. We're proud to be part of it, but it definitely, there's ups and downs that I think could be smoothed out.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
I have one more question.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
Well, yes, we can delay our break a little bit after our next witness. Go ahead.
Okay, and absolutely, Robert, I think you should have another question. There, as a researcher, I've been looking for evidence, empirical evidence, that emergency food participation reduces food insecurity, especially very low food security, which is the most severe form. I hear people who are working in the food bank industry because they're part of the food industry and think of it in terms of pounds, that it's really about, we distributed a great success, certain amount of pounds of food, but I don't know how to translate that into what is the impact on reducing food insecurity. Are you, in New York State, working to find ways of measuring the impact of the emergency food that you're distributing in terms of food insecurity? And if not, what type of infrastructure would you need to be able to track that?
That's a good question. I would say, to be honest, we have not done that type of research. I do know that the emergency feeding programs and the emergency food assistance that is provided definitely... provided definitely increases low food security in the moment. It doesn't necessarily increase load food security over time. Those problems will tend to come back. But in the moment, if I have food, I'm not hungry. So it does that. So I would be very interested in knowing more about that type of research, and I'm sure that our food banks in this state would be thrilled to participate in a study like that.
Okay, thanks.
When we were in New York City, we spent a lot of time trying to get our food banks to comply with more stringent regulations on the food, the healthy, health quality of the food that they distributed. Was that a good idea? Do you face overly burdensome regulations on salt quantity or things that you're allowed to distribute or use for purchasing food?
As part of the Feeding America Network, it's an interesting debate that happens across the country. There are some food banks that are very restrictive about what they will take, other food banks are not. We are not. We will take the food that our agencies will take. If we take it and they will take it and they can find a way to use it and benefit people, we don't want to be a barrier to them having access to that food, so we'll take it. If it came to a point where agencies stopped taking it, we'd have to go to those donors and say, we can't move this food, we can't take it anymore. The only -- oh, I was just going to mention, so that's on the Feeding America side, but...
I was just going to ask, do you worry that you're distributing food that has high salt quantities? Mr. Berg there advised me once on salt quantities and cans of, cans of vegetables. So I was wondering, do you worry about that?
I don't lose sleep at night over it. I'd rather make sure that someone is eating food. Although we provide a lot of food to people in need, it's still a smaller percentage of the total. And I have to say that not just our food bank, but food banks throughout the country, the quality of food we provide today is so much improved over what it was in the 80s and 90s, and that's for a large reason, is if you look at a grocery store and what's in a grocery store and the quality of food in the store, that's improved. Whatever happens there happens at our food banks. So we're providing much more fresh produce, much more meat, much better food than we ever did in the past. We do have a few restrictions that have been imposed upon us by the state through the HIPNAP program, and we work with them, and they do set certain parameters. For the use of the state funds through the HIPNAP program, there are certain types, only certain types of foods their money can be used for, and they do have some sodium restrictions on some of that food. When we buy food, only food that meets certain requirements can be acquired with the HIPNAP dollars these agencies receive.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. I appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
Will you please submit your remarks in writing to the commission, to Mary Council? And can we make those available on the web later on?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.